Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular Board of Directors meeting. Guidelines from Governor Inslee's office in response to the COVID-19 Act. And the Open Public Meetings Act allows in-person meetings to occur but are limited to 25% capacity in the meeting room. And everyone is required to wear a face mask covering their nose and mouth, please. Those who cannot attend in person this evening are welcome to join us via Zoom webinar. Thank you. You need to make sure everybody has their mask on with full nose and mouth, please. Ma'am, I'm asking politely if you could please be put on your mask.
I don't have to call me out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now I'd like to ask Director Piss to...
We land acknowledgement?
The pledge of allegiance, right?
Jenny, okay.
It's one of those nights.
That's all right. I'll join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord God, with which His sentence, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ as our Father.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a roll call to confirm who's in attendance tonight. Director Ginny Gronwell.
Here.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Director Julie Bookenagra.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers, she will be here. She's caught in traffic. Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
And Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll.
Here.
Thank you. Now I'd like to have Director Perkins read the land acknowledgement, please. Thank you.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowals tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. Next up, we need to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion for adoption of tonight's agenda?
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. And tonight, we have some special recognition. First, it is Native American History Month, and we're really excited to have this celebration. Evergreen Public Schools celebrates our Native American students, staff, family, and community members during the month of November and beyond. Our district serves nearly 1,000 Native students and their families, and each of them brings a unique wealth of knowledge with them into our schools each day. The contribution of Native tribes and people extend back into history well before the establishment of our state and country. The lands on which our staff and students go to school each day has been cared for since time immemorial by the Kowals tribe and the Chinook Indian Nation. We take a special moment to express our gratitude to the Kowals and Chinook tribes for their stewardship and to honor their many, many sacrifices and contributions. The contributions of Native people continue to enrich our lives. Corn and aesthetics and topical pain relievers, rubber kayaks, and the cable suspension bridge are just a few of the inventions of Native people that we still use today. Additionally, there are Native people continuing to do extraordinary things. In 2002, John Harrington of the Chickasaw Nation was the first Native American to fly in space and perform a spacewalk. Jim Thorpe of the Sack and Fox Nation descended from the famous Chipewa warrior Black Hawk was the first Native American athlete to win an Olympic gold medal. In fact, he won two of them at the 1912 Olympics, in the decathlon and the pentathlon. And recently, Deb Halen was appointed to serve as the first Native American Cabinet Secretary and head the Interior Department. Representative Halen is a member of the Pueblo of Laguna and a 35th generation New Mexican. As we continue in the spirit of inclusivity and honoring the dignity of all of our Evergreen Public Schools community members, we invite you to join us in celebrating our amazing Native American community members. You can do this by learning more about our local Native tribes, seeking out, lifting up the voices of Native peoples, and by sharing the stories and accomplishments of Native peoples with students. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
No.
Anyone from the board?
Thanks for leaving that.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
And next up, I would like to bring up Clarissa Hightower. Oh, I did hers already for her. Clarissa, I'm sorry, I took your spot. And now we have the Evergreen Award. Janay?
Good evening. Is this on? Yes. Thank you for having me. It's nice to be in front of you this evening and to be bringing the Evergreen Awards that haven't been able to be in person in quite a while. As a reminder, these are quarterly awards for employees that have demonstrated excellence in a variety of areas. There's three categories: classified, certificated, and then this evening we also have a group. There's a lot of people here, and with the pandemic and all of our restrictions, we're just going to bring in one group at a time. And we're going to start with classified. The award is going to Adriana Garcia with the ELL Department, and the Director of ELL, Veronica, is going to say a few things, and I'll step aside.
I'm very happy to join you this evening to recognize Adriana Garcia, who is our Evergreen Award recipient. Becky Parker, our family community outreach coordinator from Furcrest, nominated Adriana, and I just want to say that I couldn't agree more with this nomination. Becky Parker is here to share with you her statement and her nomination.
Adriana is extremely creative and dedicated. She works very hard to ensure that our Spanish-speaking families' voices are heard and they feel included. She also gently provides staff with education that allows us all to better serve our ELL community. Working in Evergreen schools, she constantly is juggling a million different things, but she makes you feel like you have her complete attention when she visits or answers the phone. She has built up relationships with our families that are invaluable as they navigate kindergarten all the way through graduation, and I truly believe the impact over time is that more of those students not only graduate, but also have more faith and trust in education and get more out of it, which leads to a higher level of success in their future endeavors.
Adriana, ¿qué tienes tu reconocimiento?
Thank you.
And I just want to add really quick that her family is present here tonight, and we need to thank them because without their support, Adriana couldn't do the many, many things she does for our families all the way in the evening and all hours of the day. So gracias a ustedes por estar aquí.
Sure.
It's my husband, Roberto. It's my teenager, Esteban, and my other teenager, Sebastian.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we do the picture with the... Can we do the picture?
We need a photo. We're just going to have you...
This is going to be so tricky. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Oh, except now I lost Victoria. Okay, here we go. I'm trying. I'm trying. Let me try again. It's just... Are you smiling, Adriana?
I'm always smiling.
You always are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Our next award this evening is certificated. Stuart Anderson is going to be speaking this evening, and the teacher is Amber Karen, and I'll turn it over to Stuart.
Good evening, board. First of all, it's good to be here, and it's great to see people getting awards because I know quite a few of these people, and I just feel very fortunate to be working for Evergreen Public Schools. I'm here to give an award, or to give the Evergreen Award to Mrs. Amber Karen, and this nomination came from Alyssa McAlpine, who is a paraeducator at Furcrest. And I want to read what Alyssa wrote about Amber. She says, "Amber is a teacher of the deaf and hard-of-hearing at Furcrest. While all of our staff have been using their creativity over the past couple of years as we navigate remote and hybrid learning, Amber has gone above and beyond in making sure that our deaf and hard-of-hearing kiddos still have full access to their education. She has increased her student contact time, researched accessibility options for our students who read lips, coordinated with special services and classrooms to make sure that all of our students have what they need, and picked up all the slack left by the sub shortage. Not only that, but she has also been coordinating with our families to ensure that our kiddos have what they need while they are at home and providing all the options she can for their success. She has also taken on the role of interpreter coordinator between multiple schools now. I called her for help during Camp Evergreen during the summer. When she entered, I could hear in the background that she was at Disneyland with her family. And when I asked, when I told her that this wasn't her problem to solve and she should go enjoy her vacation, her response was, except, it is my problem now because I love these kids and I want them to have what they need." And then she says, "talk about, above and beyond." And so with that, and I could echo the same words of being the principal at Furcrest and being, interacting with Amber and giving our students access, it's amazing to see what our students are doing because of her love, number one, her love for all of our kids, and her support. And so I would like to, and first of all, our staff and some kiddos got together and we made a card for Amber. And then also, I'm here, I'd like to present the Evergreen Award to Mrs. Karen.
Okay. Well, thank... Oh, okay, I'll introduce my family. This is my dad, Craig Basha, my oldest daughter, Marissa Karen, my youngest daughter, Cadence Karen, who just made it from a volleyball game, my middle daughter, Tacey Karen, and my husband, Brian Karen, and Alyssa, thank you so much, one of our interpreters. And I'm grateful to work at a school that I love with staff who are amazing and students I adore, so thank you very much. Okay. And why don't we stand there and let...
It's embarrassing to figure it out.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Erin Lucic is going to be speaking on behalf, if Home Choice wants to come in. Hi, good evening. I am honored to celebrate, perhaps long overdue, an incredible staff at large and tonight, some very special members of the staff of Home Choice Academy. Home Choice Academy staff has a really rich history of supporting staff with a unique schooling opportunities, and this year, they have supported a large number of families who wished for multiple reasons to remain remote in their instruction. So consequently, their enrollment went from 116 students and families to today, 440. The whole staff throughout this process has shown incredible persistence and flexibility and positive attitudes. And tonight, we want to especially recognize our front office staff of Home Choice Academy. They were nominated by Catherine Greenwood, a teacher at Home Choice Academy, and here are some, here are some of what she wrote. "The principal, Janet Lacasio, and the office staff worked heroically hard and for many hours to get everyone enrolled and set up with their online courses." And this is, has been no small effort or feat on their behalf. And tonight, I'd like to recognize that front office staff. Janet Lacasio, the principal. We have Don Grant, one of the secretaries. Becky Montgomery, another secretary. Carrie Fuller, a paraeducator. Susan Bleke, a paraeducator and the quarantine room clerk. And Anita Bingham. All right. We're so grateful to you for your heroic efforts and for your accommodation of so many of our families and service kids. Thank you so much, and let's give them a round of applause. And I think, I think some of them brought some family members that we'd like to introduce before we hand out the awards.
Good evening, school board. Thank you for having us, and we really are honored to accept this Evergreen Award. With me tonight is my daughter Madeline and her significant other, Ryan, way back at the back. They don't like the spotlight, unlike their mom. And we... Anita Bingham, I just want to recognize her. She retired the end of September and came back, and I was so honored that she was included because the hours and the time they took in September to get everything going, and we continue to do that on a daily basis. It has been quite the incredible journey, and we're really working with families to keep them engaged. Don, do you want to introduce your family?
My husband is here, Russ, Russ Grant, and my son, Wilson, he's right there. He's a junior. He goes across the state of Texas. Thank you.
Becky?
I have my four daughters, Emily, Jasmine, Taylor, and Bailey, and my grandson, Carter.
And then we have Susan, a support staff, and Carrie. Who do you have?
I have my daughter, Chase, and her husband, Jake.
And I know that Kathy gave the award to the front office staff, but I just want to let you know, the entire staff at Home Choice Academy has just come together and cohesively supported enrolling new kids pretty much on a daily basis. And so as we accept this award, it's not just for the six of us here, but it's for the entire staff that is now 26 strong. So thank you again.
Yeah, and if I could just say how much we all appreciate and understand exactly what you're talking about. The enrollments kind of over the years fluctuated up and down a bit, but there's no question you've been significantly impacted this year, and you, you have accepted everyone and done your best to serve them as quickly as possible, and we haven't always been as quick as we maybe need to be to respond to that. So I appreciate everything you've all done, and I'm glad Anita's here too because I know I've worked with Anita at Home Choice for a number of years, so it's, it's great that you were able to come back, and just thank you, everyone. And like you said, everybody in the... They're fortunate enough this year to be all together at Image, Old Image Elementary School, which is a little different, so at least we have a little more space to accommodate this, this year. So thank you all.
This has been a... We've had for a long time that has served families and their special needs. We want to be able to offer our families and students what they need to bring education into their, into their homes. So thank you for your hard work.
When you say staff 25, Mike, what's the staff average for an elementary school?
Oh, it's probably, probably a little more than that. I'm guessing if you're thinking about a school of 450, probably in the mid-30s, maybe.
So this is a full-size school?
Higher. Aaron? Why don't we ask Aaron? Aaron has a better... 40? 41?
Usually around 45. It depends on if you're talking about this classifying.
Yeah, everybody.
Anywhere from 45 to 85.
In an elementary school? Wow. Seems like a lot.
So we're only 26.
That was, that was kind of my point, to have your enrollment triple in weeks and, and be able to respond that way. I really appreciate the efforts that you've made and the service you bring into kids and their families.
Let's go ahead and maybe try right in front of the screen. Let's move this way. We have so many staff agents here. I send it to the staff.
They're telling me what to look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'm going to call Janay back up to talk about the contract service provider awards.
Thank you. So in addition to the Evergreen Award, we have our contractors, ABM and Chartwells, that work, we work so closely with. And we are going to begin with ABM. And Dan Britt will come up and speak about their employees.
Good evening, school board. Appreciate the opportunity to do this and recognize some of our outstanding performance custodians. In reviewing this, it wasn't easy to make a decision. There's quite a number of people that came to mind and who could receive such an award, but we landed on two, one for elementary, one for secondary schools. So we have Richard Cox here and Tracy Burbank. And do you have family members here? Okay. Okay. You want to go ahead and introduce your family members?
Oh, I'm Tracy, and this is my daughter Tiffany.
I'm Richard, and that's my wife, Michelle.
Welcome. So Richard's at Frontier Middle School, and Tracy's at Riverview Elementary. So with Tracy, she's worked with us for over 15 years, a daily custodian at Riverview Elementary. I really like visiting that school. It always has a sense of high level of cleanliness and orderliness to it. Tracy's known for outstanding performance, her eagerness to provide great service for staff and students, and also for going above and beyond expectations and doing all that with a great attitude. So thank you so much, Tracy, for, for representing ABM so well. Richard has been with us for over 20 years, a daily custodian at Frontier Middle School, also previously at Hearthwood. Richard is known for his positive attitude, being resilient, overcoming and adapting and overcoming challenges, and has a great communication. And he's also known amongst our operational team as one of our go-to people for extra assignments. So we always appreciate people that are, are willing to do that. So thanks so much, Richard, for your great performance. And then we have, we have some gifts for you, and...
Any picture? You have... They want the gifts before the picture.
Where do you want us to stand?
We want your gifts first.
Thank you.
And, and I don't know, thank you, Steve, and all, but you got to make sure you always put it on yourself.
Thank you, absolutely. Let's go ahead and have you back here. And yeah, right, can I, if you can be between that and there. Thank you, Mike. Yeah. If you want to stand, yeah, between that. I can get it. Yeah, there we go. Yeah. Especially after what Dan gave you, yes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Our next contractor award is Chartwells, Distinguished Employee Honors.
I am honored to come in front of you to help recognize team members from the food service with represent about 150 employees in our district, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention also another team right here in the ASC, leading with, by Jen Misfeld and her team to work together with us to serve our students in the 35 serving sites throughout our district. These are food service professionals that has been answering the calls in order to come and feed our students during the very first of the pandemic, and especially this year, when every one of our students are being fed for, at no cost, by the federal government. So I appreciate being the food service team that has the, to work in partnership with our district in order to, to, to make the meals for all these students. It takes a whole entire team, and I wish I can recognize every single person, but we always look for someone who's going beyond the call of duty and of what we ask of them. And tonight, we have two of those employees right behind me. Awesome. Good. First of all, in our elementary school at the Home Choice Academy, there's a, there's a theme going on with the Home Choice Academy here. We have Sagrita Bali, and she has been serving students at the Evergreen Schools District since 2010. She has spent a lot of her time at Pioneer Elementary School, but recently has stepped up and take on the management for, for Home Choice Academy. Well, she has, she's an outstanding team player. Whenever we need someone in order to help out, she has always volunteered, us including prepare meals to be distributed on the bus to be sent out to the Covington and the Marion area. That's also in packing meals delivered home to the Pioneer students also at the same time. We promoted her to a manager that give her that opportunity to grow in her career. But on top of that, being a manager, she's also volunteer on Wednesday after serving all these other days and to help out throughout our district, and that's going beyond the, what is asked of her, and I want to recognize Sagrita Bali. And then, of course, at the, at the senior high school, at the secondary school, we have Kathy Gesters. Now, she's been serving our students since the year 2001. Throughout her career with us, she has served both students at the elementary and the high school, but... But most recently, she took on the responsibility of being the assistant manager at Heritage, where we have one of the 10 Subway franchises that is instrumental in feeding our students this year. About up to 60-something percent of the meals that was serving at one time at the beginning was a Subway product. That's a lot of Subway. Subway franchise has been very happy to be able to do that. But when we give students as much as we can, they also long for the pizza and the hamburgers and the wonderful fresh cooked product. And so now it's changing back to that. So it's great. So Kathy has been doing that for us. And in addition to be a hard worker, she's also a great leader and mentor. You see that whenever we are out there packing these meals to be put onto the buses, she will take under people who come in to work during those times and take them under her wing and teach them how to do, what to do to palletize these products in order to take it out and to be able to work with our transportation team to deliver to these homes. So it's a wonderful things that she has that work ethic that we recognize. And I want to thank you so much that we recognize Kathy Gesters.
Thank you.
Same thing?
I think we finally got now. There we go. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Janay. Okay, next, I'd like to call up Shane Gardner, who will talk to us about some exemplary exemplary action by an employee of the district. We're very excited to hear about this. Hi, Shane.
I'm here to recognize Erin Lee, who's one of our bus drivers. And actually, I haven't actually met Erin. Hi, Erin. Awesome. As the Director of Safety and Security for this school district, every day presents challenges for every one of our employees. We know through Maslow's hierarchy of needs that our kids can't learn unless they feel safe and are fed and have a safe place. And I've heard it said a number of times that our bus drivers are instrumental in that because they're the first ones to greet our kids every day and the last one to say goodnight to them as they get off the bus and go home. And it's no easy thing, I imagine. I talked to Wendell and Yvonne about this often, that driving a bus while managing all the traffic things that we do in our own vehicles every day with traffic laws, we're also managing up to 60 or so kids on a bus that are behind you, facing you, doing any number of things. And it's a very complex and complicated thing, and no one knows what they can expect any day. But what we all hope is that when the time comes for action, that we can perform. And I think that that happens through somebody that mentally prepares themselves for the responsibilities that they're given and thinks about these things ahead of time. And Erin, I just, I wrote this thing. I'm going to read it here in a minute. But I just want to tell you how impressed I am with my years in law enforcement and watching people react to situations like I'd be in a foxhole with you any day. Because without hesitation, when faced with a situation, you acted. And with that, I'll read what I wrote with my glasses on here. The dictionary defines a hero as a person of distinguished courage or ability admired for his or her brave deeds and noble qualities. Heroes come in many forms in life, ranging from family and friends to athletes to movie stars. Heroes act before anyone else realizes there's a problem. As role models, heroes guide us through the examples they set. And heroes, real-life heroes, rarely get the recognition they deserve. Evergreen Public Schools is grateful for the contribution of those who make a difference in the lives of our students and staff. One of our heroes is Erin Lee, a bus driver who's been with Evergreen Public Schools since January of 2020. On October 27, 2021, while Erin was driving bus 126 along her morning route, she saw one of her students waving her arms and running towards the bus. The student's demeanor, action, and location were not normal, and Erin instinctively stopped the bus and opened the door. As the door opened, Erin could hear the student shrieking in terror and simultaneously realized the man was chasing the student. She quickly closed the door and safely accelerated away from the man who tried to grab the student. Less than a block away stood another student at their usual bus stop. Erin did not know whether the man had chased the first student would go after the second student, so she pulled up and opened the door and yelled at her to get in as quickly as she could. While she was managing this incident, Erin also sought to console the student who was terrified. She called her by name, which is a great tool to connect with someone who's panicking. And it's evident that she spent time building relationships with the students who ride her bus. Erin takes her role as a bus driver seriously. She is the first and last EPS employee to see these students day in and day out. In an instant, she knew something wasn't normal because she knows her students. Erin did not react to the situation that morning. She acted. Erin processed the totality of the situation in mere seconds and acted in the best interest of the students she serves. All the while, she verbally checked in with them and then notified her dispatch of the encounter when it was safe to do so. Erin did not know what would happen next, but she wasn't waiting to find out either. Her actions were immediate and affected the outcome instantaneously. Some freeze when overwhelmed in an emergency. Erin is not one of those people. The responsibility to transport minors safely to and from school every day is not for the faint of heart. In addition to being defensive drivers, they also have to be acutely aware of their surroundings at all times. Erin's immediate and swift actions that morning only took a matter of seconds, but they made a lifetime of difference to the students she picked up that morning. We thank and acknowledge Erin for acting courageously in the intense, in the interest of those students. When seconds counted, she rose to the occasion and met it with character, preparation, and training. We honor Erin this evening, our Evergreen hero. So just a little bit of background, if anybody isn't aware, that we had a student who was being chased by an individual. And exactly what I just read unfolded that as Erin came around the corner, it was unfolding quickly. Afterwards, we made a police report and police were able to contact the individual and confirm that exactly that he had acted in a way untoward to the student. It wasn't welcome. And we had great support from Vancouver Police with that investigation as well. But were it not for your swift actions, who knows what the outcome of that could have been. So thank you.
About what was going on in your mind at the time? How did you remain so composed and just know exactly what to do?
I don't know. I just, I saw him chasing her and I knew it's Janie get on the bus and the door needed to be shut as fast as possible and away from that situation. Keep her safe.
Thank you for your quick thinking and your steady demeanor. I'm sure that was very reassuring.
After watching the video, I was shaking. So and I still am getting, just thinking about it. So it's, I mean, we witnessed what happened and just thank you for keeping our students safe.
Okay, now.
She already did it.
Oh, she, oh.
Oh, you want another one? No?
Okay, thank you.
She's stealth.
Thank you, Erin. And I think we have members of the transportation staff supporting Erin and maybe family members. Is there any family members here too?
Yay.
Nice. Yeah, you can introduce your family.
We just can't hear you if you're not at the microphone. That's why we actually come back up.
Sister-in-law, Kim Rolfe here, my boss, Yvonne, trainer Cheryl, another supervisor, Doreen, trainer Nicole, and Ann and Rich are both trainers as well.
Thanks, everyone for being here. Thank you so much, Erin.
I know. It's like all of a sudden noises.
Oh, my gosh.
Shades are coming up.
Thanks for being with us. What an awesome lady. Okay. Next up is our board consent agenda. Do I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda?
Move adoption of the board consent agenda is presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have, oops. What's going on here? I'm off. A long consent agenda. Okay. Next up, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, following that, we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Merle, now.
Thank you, Victoria. Just, I'll give a couple of quick things. First thing I would mention is that we continue to work, we have a committee working on the strategic plan. We've been meeting since late August, had six sessions on every other Thursday night with some parents, with students, with staff members, working on, kind of looking at a new strategic mission statement, vision statement. We're getting closer to concluding that process, which the conclusion of it really is getting us to the point where we can then go out to the community and start to have conversations with the community around that. Expect that to happen in January. So really appreciative of Education Northwest that who have led us through that process and participated in a number of meetings. We had a Gates grant that helped fund that, the facilitator. That's gone real well. Excited to be able to do that after the first of the year. You know, I think tonight is a great night to have an opportunity to honor a lot of staff that we have in our district that go above and beyond. And what's unfortunate is that we can't honor everyone that's going above and beyond because I feel like every day, everyone that works in our district goes above and beyond. The conditions that we're working under at a very difficult moment in time, bringing students back to our school systems, which has been fantastic and everybody's excited about. But their absence for a year and a half and being at home certainly has made the adjustment to bringing students into the schools much more challenging than what we might see if we looked at bringing kids to school five years ago or six years ago. So I'm just really appreciative of all of our staff. I know over the last two, three months, I've got, been able to get out to every elementary school, talk with principals, kind of go through the building, observe various things. I'm just so appreciative of all of our staff that we have everything that they're doing on a daily basis, knowing the struggles that we face on a daily basis. And important, I think, for us to get feedback from our building staff members and kind of share their views. We talked this morning in our leadership team meeting about a survey that we'll kind of share with our staff, just get some feedback on the, how people are feeling about the year and how things are going, what options might we have that we can do to support our staff. So we, I think, appreciate so much and are so grateful for the students being back in school and our staff and everything that they're doing to support our students. And we want to try to do everything we can to make the transition through the year as smooth as possible. We have, over the last several, as I think I mentioned, I've been to nine schools in the last couple of weeks. Last week, some of the board members had an opportunity to tour Wai East and Mountain View. May be able to share some of your thoughts around that. Unbelievable work going on on the construction end of things as well in the district. Had a couple of meetings over the last couple of weeks with some citizen groups and business groups around the levy resolution that we'll talk about, just looking for as much feedback as we could, getting us to this point. It's, and then also they will continue with the conversation around the skilled trade center. So there's been a lot of stuff going on. We had a, this afternoon, a webinar with Superintendent Reichdahl. I think a lot of districts are interested in understanding whether the State Department of Health is planning or the governor are planning any updates to any of the guidelines that we're working under with respect to masks, vaccinations. He again, he again spoke very strongly about the, that there wouldn't be a mandated vaccination for students this school year. Did not see that happening, does not see that happening at all. He does not see change to the guidance with respect to masks. I think that the feedback that he's receiving from schools is the contact tracing and the masks that with the vaccination levels we have in our buildings across the state, that there, maybe there needs to be some consideration for some relaxation of that. I think what he's hearing from the governor and the State Department of Health is that the case levels are still too high. We're not at a point in time where they can make that recommendation. He said we won't hear anything likely until January from anyone. So we will continue to work. One thing I am really happy with, it feels like the first month or so, month plus of the year, was just getting into the routine of getting back to school and our kids and our staff kind of regaining the stamina of being away for such a significant amount of time. We're having more conversations about actual, that, you know, not that the instruction wasn't going on from the beginning, but we're getting more into the professional development in the buildings and the PLCs and the work that's going on. So it's a different new normal, but I think we're starting to adjust to that. So really appreciative of our staff. And that's all of that.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next, we have matters reserved for board action. Tonight, we have resolution number 6578, Evergreen School District Replacement Educational Programs and Operations Levy. I'm going to turn this over to Mike to give us some more clarity on this.
Yes, so what we are looking for from the board is authorization of passage of the resolution in front of you, which three years ago in 2019, February of 2019, our voters passed two separate levies. They passed a operations levy and they passed a three-year operations levy and a six-year technology levy. Now, those percentages were 51.61% and 51.67%. So again, it's, levies are 50% passage, bonds are 60% passage. So we passed both of those. The three-year levy proposal is expiring in the 22 calendar year. What we're looking at is an election in February to extend that. And what you have in the resolution is a three-year levy replacing an expiring levy. So it's a continuation of the levy that is existing. And I'll speak a little bit about the rates that we're looking at with respect to that. In 2019, when we passed the levy, we had a couple of things, I think, that impacted. In 2019, when we passed the levy, we had a couple of things, I think, that impacted the percentage. One was, we had passed in 2018 a bond, the largest bond in the history of the state of Washington, $695 million. And then the next year, we were coming back with a levy, and I think that that was confusing for people to say, why am I, I just did this, and there was some skepticism at that time. The second thing was, in the fall of 2018, of course, we had had the strike and there was just a lot of, still a lot of angst, I think, throughout the community at that point in time. As we look forward to where we're at right now, some of the things that we're facing are listed under the 2021 enrollment decline. We have seen an enrollment decline as related to COVID. We've talked about that extensively. Over the last two years, we've lost about 2,000 students. Levy equalization is a funding revenue source that the state historically had had, basically looked and said, in your community, value-wise, how do you compare to the rest of the state? And if you're below the statewide average, the, the state of Washington would provide equalization funding to make the tax burden on local levies less impactful because of the lower values. The, the next slide I'll show you in a second will kind of show the, the fact that our equalization, where we've had high dollar amounts, that number is now declining. With the new McCleary formula, it's a new formula that has less to do with values and more to do with a dollar amount per student and how many kids you have in the district, which is why the enrollment decline is affecting us. We have federal lesser funds that we receive to respond to the COVID, the COVID impact, to kind of help us through. So those federal funds are available to us in the 19, 20 school year, all the way through the 23, 24 school year. So we're trying to use those funds to bridge ourselves to the new levy. And then obviously the things that we always have to consider are our tax rates and the tax impact on the citizens in the community. The levy equalization, I mentioned that there has been a decline. In 2018, this is pre-McClary, our value, our less levy equalization allocation for the calendar year was over $18 million. You can see that in '21, that number is 9.9, and then it's estimated to go down to 7.6, 940,000, and then zero in 2024 and beyond. The, the reason the numbers are higher in '21 and '22 is that we have been able to use enrollment figures from 2019, 20, when they were higher. The legislature gave a hold harmless with respect to enrollment for '21 and '22, but in '23 and beyond, it's all generated based upon your actual enrollment. And the reason I illustrate this slide is basically to show that we, we will go from receiving approximately $18 million just three, four years ago to zero by the time we get to 2024, which has to play a part in the resolution that you have in front of you. This slide shows our current and estimated total property tax rates. In '21, the bond rate that you see, the dollar 76, when we passed that bond in 2018, we promised the voters that we, our tax rate would remain flat or go down. What you're seeing there is the dollar 76 is where we were at, and we have maintained that rate for the first, since from 19 through 22. The technology levy, which was authorized, is right around 42 cents. Our operations levy, you see at a dollar 72, and then eventually bumping up to $2.12. So what you have in your resolution is as our bond rate declines by 40 cents roughly, our operations levy would increase by the same amount to allow us to increase our levy and offset the levy equalization decline and the fact that the Esser funds will decline over time as well. But doing so, allowing us to keep our total tax rate at that $3.90 or $3.89 over the four-year period. So, what basically you see are the amounts in the resolution for '23, 48.5, 56.9, and 59.7, representing an increase in the operations levy rate per thousand, offset by a decline in the bond rate per thousand, leaving the overall rate total. Now that shows about a $21 million increase in revenue over a three-year period, but when you actually use the levy figures with equalization over that period of time, it's actually about a $13 million increase that we see from 2022 to 2025. And that reflects, again, the, the reduction and ultimate elimination of any levy equalization funds coming our way. So, this levy, at the present time, makes up about 12.3% of our yearly budget. That number will likely go up to 15, 16% as the number increases. Provides critical and necessary programs to assist enrichment and provide successful educational opportunities for all students. Allows us to attract and retain the best and brightest staff members and maintains the current property tax level while maximizing return on investment. We, as a district, our role in, in the levy obviously is passage and then providing as much information as we possibly can, which we will do. It's our belief that we need to get in front of as many groups as we possibly can to help explain the replacement levy, that it's not a new tax, that it's a replacement of an expiring levy. I think we need to explain as much as we possibly can and inform about the, really our successes with taxpayer funds over many, many years in this district, whether that's operation, delivering programs at lower administrative costs than other areas in the state, delivering lower class, smaller class sizes, delivering tremendous programs for kids, whether those are athletics, activities, arts, music, STEM, delivering tremendous projects through the bonds that we've passed. This largest bond in the history, the $695 million bond that we passed in 2018. Here we are, flash forward three, almost four years. We've been able to achieve everything we promised the taxpayers and the voters that we would in terms of construction. We've been able to do a number of additional things to support kids, whether that's additional fields throughout the district, whether that's, as the board authorized a few months ago, an additional elementary school, Mill Plain Elementary, replacement of Mill Plain Elementary School. Whether that's additional music rooms for our schools to provide support for kids in orchestra programs and band programs. I, I think it's imperative that we tell our story and share the things that we've been able to do, and I think that this is a responsible request. The, we, we could potentially have asked for an increase of maybe 20 cents before you got to the lid, I think, beyond what we've got here. So we're not asking for the, the highest amount of money that we could receive, but we are asking for an increased amount to offset the levy equalization and be able to maintain the programs that we have in our system. So, that's what you have in the resolution in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or provide any context or, or just listen to.
I guess just one clarifying question. On the tech levy, because it was six years before?
Yeah.
Is that part of the renewal?
No.
Okay.
So the 2019 technology levy will expire in 2025. And so, we're looking at a three-year levy here, so that the '22 levy would run for '23, '24, '25. It would expire at the same time as the technology levy expired in 2025. You have the ability to run an operations levy for one, two, three, or four years. If we ran it for two years, we would renew that in '24 and then ask for a renewal for the technology potentially in '25. We just think it makes more sense to line those up at the same time.
So that tax rate that you showed us at the 3.89 includes the tech and?
It's the bond rate, the technology rate, and the operations rate, all three of those levies, correct?
Perfect.
So, do you know, I guess I, I heard about a law that requires the board or, or you to find folks to write a statement for and a statement against for the voter pamphlet here.
I can't hear you.
So, I'm, I'm talking about the, do we have a way to call on members of the community to write advocacy for and against the way I think the law requires?
Yeah, there's a, there's an obligation for the district to reach out to try to find a pro statement for the levy and a con statement for the levy. There's a group, the Evergreen Citizens for Schools. Actually, Tanisha Harris, I think you can see her in the back of the room here tonight. She, we, we would likely ask the Citizens for Schools to write the pro. And then we've had citizens that we've reached out to, we will find somebody that is willing to write the con statement. That is our obligation to do that.
That's all, Mike.
And then that ends up in the voter's pamphlet, is where that gets published.
Rachel, do you have any questions? I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from the audience. Okay, then I'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
I move the adoption of resolution 6578. Authorize the district to ask for the, ask for the levy.
Wait a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, guess we're, we're having an election.
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is a department update, teaching and learning equity update, and I'm going to ask Carissa Hightower to provide us with that tonight.
Good evening. I'm going to begin with the teaching and learning portion of the update. But as a reminder, our teaching and learning efforts are centered in equity. And so even as I'm sharing this with you, there are portions of equity within that. And then after that, I'll share specific equity updates as well. So, so first up, we are preparing, so teaching and learning specialists as well as equity department at large, we are preparing for our leadership gathering on next week. And in that time, we have a whole group and a small group or PLC portion. During that whole group, we will be preparing leaders and talking with leaders about multi-tiered systems of support, including bringing clarity to what constitutes core instruction, what all students get, as well as what that layered intervention systems look like and how we attend to those specific needs. We'll also be providing clarity of core instruction, including deepening the understanding and implementation of culturally responsive practices with our leaders. Instructional leaders have been grouped into the PLCs for a portion of our leadership time to explore specific questions that are related to MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support, as well as culturally responsive practices. And those PLCs are going to be facilitated by our ASC staff. So our specialists, as well as department leaders. Speaking of tightening up our core instruction, we are in the midst of the third year of our Fontana-Fenelle classroom implementation at the elementary level. And that's focusing on phonics and word study specifically now in year three. We're also piloting an elementary math curriculum as we plan to follow the elementary ELA adoption with a new and much-needed math adoption. And as all of those things are taking place, any person who is attached to this work is remembering our equity lens and keeping equity at the center of all the decisions being made. For our equity update, so equity in facilities. In partnership with Mahalum and Espousal, our STEM accelerator project aims to bring more diverse students into the STEM career paths by providing them with an opportunity to be leaders in the design process of the project and providing input on what would make this program appealing to diverse groups so that that appeal can be reflected in the program and in the building, in the actual space, the building. We are also beginning our affinity groups this month. Well, some have already begun, but the ones that are beginning this month are our Asian Parent Affinity Group, our Indigenous and Native American Staff Students and Relatives Affinity Group, our Pacific Islander Staff Students and Family Affinity Group, our Staff of Global, of Global Majority Affinity Group, or Staff of Color. And already in place, we have our Spanish-speaking Parent Affinity Group that meets on a weekly basis. To come, our Black and African-American, White, LGBTQIA+ and students and their parents of students receiving special education services affinity groups will be beginning as well. Our Equity Advisory Committee met at the end of October to revisit the stakeholder subgroup goals for this year. So they are creating their plan for what they'd like to endeavor upon this year as a group. As well as we looked at our feedback for the equity operational expectation, made sure that we each understood each other's feedback and provided those there for you all for the document, and hopefully you received that link so you can access that. Our equity team is curating proactive and responsive resources to support with students' social-emotional learning as well as behavioral needs. In addition to resources for helping staff continue to become more familiar with culturally responsive teaching and the Ready for Rigor Framework. And we're doing that by uploading these resources to Canvas so that they can be readily accessible for our coaches, administrators, and then eventually our teachers. Myself and Jamila are doing dignity work with the equity team. We're building their capacity around centering dignity in all of our interactions and creating spaces where patience, openness, listening, and empathy is modeled, even when it is not reciprocated. We are practicing with that. And finally, our equity team specialists, in conjunction with teaching and learning specialists, are continuing to show up in our buildings to come alongside our building leaders and staff to support them in, in their equity work efforts in a way in which they feel super supported and that our commitment to equity is beyond lip service. And our actions are lining up with what we have committed to our community as well as to our students. And that is the teaching and learning equity update. Are there any questions?
Carissa, where can the, where can the feedback from the OE equity policy work be found?
It's a Google Doc link, and so if we can share the link with the board, you all, you will have access to the comments made by our committee.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I know that was a lot.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our focus on student results. This, we'll be discussing results policy R-3 equity. This is a second reading and renumbering of subsequent policies. I'm going to open the hearing up for the second reading and call on Director Rogers, who has revised the policy.
Are we going to pull it up or? Is what we looked at last time in workshop?
I have it ready to duplicate onto the screens.
Thank you. So no changes since we discussed it a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting in a workshop. This is what Rob mostly came up with after a lot of... This is what Rob mostly came up with after a lot of discussion and input from community members, stakeholders, and our Equity Group. Anyway, I think that it is... I don't know why that's the only thing. Super loud. Only like I have Mike's voice or something. I think it well puts forth what we want to say about this issue and what we want to focus on and what, you know, our beliefs are and the results that we want to see. So I would recommend adoption at this point by the board. This is our second reading. So do we need to make a motion before we discuss it?
I have on here that Director Perkins is going to give a summary of the revisions. Is that the case?
I was going to say Rachel, she just did.
Yeah, I think she just did. The summary is, we had our conversations around what we learned about the word respect and modified it according to the feedback that we'd gotten from community members and from staff about how it should look in order to maintain, well, climate of... Where did I put the document? I think this is right. The climate of dignity and compassion that we're looking for. So as with Rachel, no one has approached me asking for changes from that adopted language. And what we need to, I think what we need to do is vote to replace the previous language from first reading with this language and then vote to adopt the change.
Okay. So moved.
So that'd be a motion for that first vote to replace the language.
Second.
Okay, now I'm going to call for audience questions and comments. Do I have anyone who'd like to?
I'm trying to get this back on the screen.
Who'd like to address the board regarding this topic? Okay. We already have a motion on the floor. So are we just?
So we have a motion and a second to replace the language from the first reading with the language on the screen here.
After which, we'll have to vote again to adopt.
Right, so I think we need to take a vote on that.
As amended.
And then we have a new motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor. Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, do we need a new motion then for, to accept the new?
To adopt it, yeah.
The way I understand it is that the motion to adopt is on the floor after we adopted, voted to amend, so you can call the vote or ask for more comments.
Okay, so do we... I'm calling for a motion then. We don't need another motion?
Nope.
That's what we've got?
You just need to vote.
Or ask.
Okay.
Or maybe you may comment.
Yeah, we'll tell them, answer.
Or questions.
I have a comment.
Okay, thanks.
Tonight's a night of celebration, and this is equally exciting, well, maybe not as exciting as some of the heroic efforts of our employees, because that was pretty great. But we've been working on this for a long time. It's a long time coming, and so I think we should celebrate that we are close to having this adopted in our results policies.
When I was in a Wasdah meeting today, Ledge Reps Learn, they're talking about graduation requirements, they asked for just like an open mic to talk about it. And I was able to tell them about the process we went through. And people really appreciated hearing about how the community was able to add their input and basically help us make a better result than we might otherwise have had had they stayed silent. I appreciate that.
I'm appreciative that we've gotten to this point finally. It feels like it's been years and years. But I feel like the work has been good. I think it's respectful of all of our students and our families. It doesn't exclude anybody, but it also doesn't prefer anybody. And I like it that all of our kids should be able to come into our system and feel like their needs are going to be met and that they're going to get the best education that they need to be successful in the world. So I'm happy about it. It's been a long time coming. Anybody else? Okay, are you ready for a vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, Results Policy R-3 Equity and renumbering or subsequent policy is approved as presented. Great. Okay, next up, we have Results Policy R-6 Citizenship. This is also a second reading of renumbered Results Policy. Director Perkins, do you want to give a summary on the revisions?
So in our workshop last time, we had, there's a little feedback coming through there. We had a really good conversation about what should go into a citizenship policy and recognized, I think, that there's a lot of work to do and a lot of community feedback to gather, just based on the initial feedback that we got in first reading. So what's coming back to us here, let me just get that on the screen to the right size, is the texts from the proposed first reading without any other modifications. But I think also with our board commitment that we'll schedule that work for the coming year. It removes one of the lines, if you remember exactly what the wording is.
Demonstrate cultural competence.
Demonstrate cultural competence is removed from the citizenship Results Policy because an enhanced version of that is in the Equity Policy that we just passed. So at this point, I'm recommending that we proceed with the adoption of this language change as presented from first reading and move forward.
Okay. I'm going to call for audience questions and comments. Okay. Now go ahead and call for a motion.
I move the board accepts the revisions as presented for approval.
Second.
Now the board can ask any questions.
I think there's an online question.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Was it a chat question?
She said, "I am wondering if I can ask what it will need when this is set into motion fully?"
When it's set into motion?
Fully.
That's part of what we're dealing with, with our strategic plan. That process is, we'll have that all fleshed out at that point. And we would certainly welcome anyone in the audience and out in the community to participate as we get the feedback on that. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then we will now take a vote to accept the revisions presented and move it forward for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Results Policy R-3 Citizenship is approved as presented. Next up is the Good News Report, and I would like to ask Gail Soller, our Senior Director of Communications, to come on up.
Here we go with your November good news. Legacy High School's welcomed back PAL mentors as part of the Prosper Program. The mentors assist students with goals for the future, as well as actionable steps for, to work toward achieving those goals. Our CTE students from Heritage, Mountain View, and Union High Schools designed and tested model vehicles to determine crashworthiness. Admirable for teenagers, especially those getting ready to drive. So the top designers came from students at Heritage and Mountain View. We are so delighted as we welcome volunteers back into our schools, like our PAL mentors, as well as our Art Discovery Volunteers. They've been busy back in our elementary schools. Here, they're working on some projects at Sunset. This group was also featured recently in a Colombian news story. Our Emerald Elementary students and staff recently raised awareness around breast cancer with a school-wide pink-out. And meanwhile, over at Burton Elementary, they wore orange in honor of Unity Day, which is featuring an emphasis on kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Heritage High School Skills USA team collaborated across the world with a team from Australia's Matherde College. Not only did they share portfolios, but information on interesting local attractions and differences. And then last week marked the annual celebration of the Day of the Dead. And so our FCRC Coordinator, Luisa Turner, at Marion Elementary, which is also home to one of our dual immersion programs, helps students and families by sharing in the learning around Day of the Dead, as celebrated in Mexico. Quite a nice window display. And Mike can also share as well. Last week marked a very special milestone for our district with the introduction and the first game of middle school soccer. This launch of boys' soccer will be followed in January with girls' soccer. It was the most requested sport by families and students to be added at the middle school level. And that is your good news for the evening.
Is there other schools that are playing soccer?
Vancouver, I think that in the conversation with Camus has, they've created one team to compete with.
Okay.
But we've got, many of our schools have A and B teams, so we're not cutting, so we're encouraging.
We can just play each other. I think it's great.
And it's all three grades also, so that's a tremendous thing. It is really nice.
That is wonderful. I hear soccer's a popular sport.
That was response to feedback from, like as Gail's saying, asking kids, but trying to get more students that haven't necessarily always participated in extracurricular activities to have a sport that is, a sport that appeals to them. So very, very big thing, and really, really felt good about that. We were going to do it last year, but of course COVID got in the way of last year, so we're doing it this year.
Yay.
I'm trying to be too loud, Rachel.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Citizen Comments. It's the time for people to address the board about items not already on the agenda, not personnel or legal in nature. And we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and realize that the board is not allowed to respond except for with clarifying questions. So we have somebody, one person listed, it's Sarah Akey. Did I pronounce her name right? Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Doing really well. Oh, I hope one day this is not neurographic anymore. First, I want to congratulate Julie and Jenny on retaining your seats on the board. I am really excited to continue being able to work with you and communicate with you. Okay, I'm going to read, sorry. We've been talking, I've been up here talking about masking, critical race theory, which I am so grateful for all of the work that has been done to show transparency. I know that I can, I need to speak for myself. I have learned so much, and I'm so grateful, particularly for the presentation recently. It's been, it's been really, really great, and it's eased my mind a lot. Tonight, I'm here to sound the alarm on the issue of vaccines. I know that some, I'm sure that you guys know that emergency use authorization has come down. What's going to follow mandates after they get it approved? I know that that'll be a lengthy process. I'm also aware that you guys are not public health. Neither is Chris Reichdahl, neither is Jay Inslee. But this is an alarming conversation that is happening with parents right now. What happens when this becomes a mandate? We're seeing it in private and public sectors for employees right now. You're being forced to make a decision that you may not be comfortable with. Get an injection or lose everything. I'm seeing both sides. I'm not anti-vaccine. I'm pro-choice. I'm anti-mandate. I think people need an opportunity to make their own decisions, and I'm really worried for what this means, should this become a mandate for our kids to come to school. Currently, religious and medical exemptions, we're not seeing those being honored in other sectors. I understand that this public school is going to be a little bit different. But what we're seeing is that a lot of the things that are happening out there are coming here. I'm afraid for the moment when our children are going to be denied an education based on their vaccination status. We're seeing people being denied paychecks based on vaccination status. This isn't a topic that needs any kind of addressing now from you guys. It's a fluid situation, it's not static. I know that Reichdahl right now is saying, "We don't anticipate this." But it's fluid. The situation is ever-changing. It's not one-size-fits-all. There's a lot of gray area. But this is a conversation that people are starting to take very seriously and talk a lot about, what are we going to do? If it becomes a mandate and the public school system isn't prepared to honor exemptions, we're going to continue on enrolling our kids. We don't want to do that. This isn't the school system that I, that's not the kind of school system that I grew up in, and I don't want it to be when my boys grow up in. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate you being here tonight. Do we have anybody online?
Any.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Board Comments. Anything newsworthy?
We have the Foundation on Saturday.
How did that go?
The gala was, it was a lot of fun. It went really well. They reached their goal of $100,000, so they raised $100,000. And then...
Rob won the big trip, the hot...
I, I won one of the auctions.
You bid on it to raise money.
Yes.
I bid on it to raise money.
And then they announced, I think it was today or yesterday, that the school that won, so Frontier won the school prize. So Frontier got $1,000 towards the school.
Yeah, that's right.
It's good, it's good.
Yeah, I'm glad that they're, they still were able to, because it wasn't, oh, it was scheduled in October, right? And then they delayed it to November, but we're still a little bit behind in the timing. But it was nice to see the students get recognized for their scholarships that graduated last spring, and they did their video, most of them, from the college that they were attending. So that was really nice to see and see the progress that the kids are making and know that the Foundation's having an impact on our students.
Yeah, it was fun. And I was monitoring all the comments and stuff, so to make sure that it was, kept going.
Nice.
Yeah, so it was fun to see what everybody was talking about and all the comments about all the great trips. And they actually ended up selling two of the big trips, one to Jessica Chudik, and then I don't remember who was the other one.
I think Jason Moore.
Jason Moore, yeah.
Was the Teacher of the Year a few years ago.
Yes.
And then did Dawn?
Dawn Harris won something.
Oh, it was Dawn, it wasn't Jessica. Jessica won, there was something else she was bidding. I think she was in the bidding, but you're right, I believe Dawn because I was going to text her and say, "Girls trip." Leave Charlie at home.
I want to recognize Rebecca Vafas for the work that she does on that. It's been kind of a skeleton crew over at the Foundation, and she just continues to, you know, work with the sponsors and organize... you know, work with the sponsors and organize a successful event. And Craig, too. He did a fantastic job. He's amazing at that. He's, he cracks me up. I don't know why, but he's just so funny when he's on the broadcast.
He's the best telethon host I've ever seen.
I watched, I have to say, because I watched, I think it was Friday night, I watched the sports news when he was doing the...
Friday Night Lights.
Friday Night Lights. It was pouring down rain on him.
Oh.
And he did not miss a beat. And then the next night, he was right there doing the live auction for the foundation, so.
And also the guy from The Wolf, is that the radio station?
I think so.
Danny?
Danny, the liar.
Yeah, I mean, that was, they both were amazing. They really were.
Well, I was quite surprised yesterday when I was on hold with transportation to realize that Matt Griffins, our hold music, or our whole voice of, thank you for holding, someone will be with you shortly. So every time he'd like clip into the music, I just started laughing because it's like, oh my God, that's Matt.
That's funny.
Luis got a good voice for...
He does, it's like, I'm like, okay, maybe I should meditate.
That was the most fun in a Zoom meeting that I've ever had. And I think their, their auction online interaction system was actually better than WAZDA's. When we had our general assembly, not that it wasn't good, the foundation just found a better one for their purpose.
It was the same one they didn't use last year, which was really, really, worked really, really well for them for the online. So, but yeah, they went online because they, their in-person got canceled, so that's why it went pushed back another month so they could refocus.
It was worthwhile to go. I really appreciate the last-minute invitation because that kicked me out of my, that kicked me out of my complacency to go attend and sure was glad to participate. We had the general assembly from WAZDA and attended there over the course of two days. There were a lot of, there was a lot of voting going on. And so WAZDA has now accomplished its general assembly task and the legislative and permanent positions are now set for the next year. When we go into workshop later on, I'll show you the document with the 15 highest priority positions that I, that I picked out from discussing things with Mike a little bit and also just reflecting on our results policies and our operational expectations policies. Unfortunately, their schedule just made it so that it was too late to actually discuss this in a workshop. It just happened then. Gave us like seven days and, so I did the best I could. The document will be there at workshop.
That's why you're the ledge rep.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Yeah. What else did we do?
Julie, oh, Julie and I, and Mike, were at the strategic planning meetings on Thursday nights and this last one, we really got a lot done.
Yeah.
I feel bad, we're gonna be gone for the next one. The next Thursday, Wednesday, we'll be at the conference. So we need to make sure they were that and let them know.
I think we have a meeting before, like with the districts, so I'll fill you in on what is upcoming and make sure you know, in case there's anything, we need your feedback on.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else? Okay.
No, we're good.
Any future agenda items we'd like to add to the, to the stack?
I'll be a stack.
Okay, so I'm gonna call us to recess. We, it's 7:06. And we'll sign documents and return for a workshop on legislative updates, board policies. We will not be talking about student representative timelines. That has been, that will be postponed. Then it will be followed by an executive session to review the performance of a public employee and expected to last an hour. I thank everybody for joining us tonight. Okay, we are back. Into session here. First up, we have some legislative updates.
Yeah.
Legislative Representative, Mr. Griffins.
Think about how to get this over to the, okay. Someone could switch the screen.
Are you plugged in?
I thought I am. As far as, as far as I can tell, it's hooked up and duplicated, so.
Can you, um, can I plug it back in?
I love that show. Are you sure it's plugged in? This was working a half hour ago.
I know.
I made the mistake of saying it's nice when you plug it in and it works.
Yeah, spoke too soon.
Oh, you got it. So the document that you have in Board Docs is the prioritization that Mike and I came up with for the legislative positions as they were passed out of general assembly, which were due yesterday at noon, signed at noon before we could have a broader workshop conversation. I made the decisions based on our results policies, Mike's feedback about operations, and placed student safety as our first priority. Budget stability, which used to be called hold harmless, as second priority. And then funding behavioral support services and social emotional learning for students as the third. The fourth is the transportation STARS formula. And I think it's worth mentioning to you that I actually heard Senator Wellman say less than confident things about the potential for reform on the STARS formula this short session, but I, I don't know what consultations she's been having with the House about that or anything. Equity is in the fifth priority. The WAZDA position is actually older than this last year. And then I also included positions related to, you know, mastery-based learning, graduation Number eight is public option for online education. It's a new position this year. It's actually something that calls for a public option for online education that's funded at parity with basic education. And SEB at number 10. And then through 11 through 15 has to do with support for infrastructure, internet connection, infrastructure, technology funding, diverse staff, professional development. Those, when there are 113 positions to choose from and some of them overlap in their language, what I got here was pretty much the best I could do with a great big list. I hope I expressed the sense of the board and the document is there. We're going into the legislative committee meeting. As you know, I'm on that committee, so if there's more feedback from us or from the other surrounding districts that you know about, I'm happy to be a conduit for that feedback as we get into messaging into the next legislative session for WAZDA.
So this is your 15?
That's my 15.
When does WAZDA come up with their 15 based on everybody's?
WAZDA responds to everybody's and produces a top 10. And we narrowed that down this weekend to a top three or sort of a messaging platform. You remember those card handouts from 2019? So there'd be like three things that WAZDA says in general. And then we let our advocates speak from the past positions. It's worth mentioning, having listened to Senator Wellman though, is that when we get into this short session, she talked about a lot of fatigue among legislators in general, not just about education, but just in general, and a desire to have that 60-day session be about tweaks and budget adjustments that might be necessary. But she didn't have confidence for a lot of, a lot of great reform. So here's hoping the workload would be a little lighter. That'd be kind of nice. But yeah, just need your feedback and I wanted to make sure that you had the document before, in front of you and could look over those choices and help me refine them as the months go on.
And you've had a chance to look them all over, right?
Rob came and met last week, I think it was last week.
Yeah, we talked on Friday, or Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were great. And then Rob asked me what kind of my top three or four or whatever.
So Mike's top three is our top three.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
That is all.
There wasn't anything on there that I thought was not needed.
Yeah.
It's all important stuff.
I think I've heard the same thing, Rob, with respect to the STARS, that there might be an ability to start the process of moving things forward, but in a short session, it's not gonna advance completely. Next year, there'd be a better chance for that to potentially happen.
Yeah. We, we hear that from time to time. We heard that about the pathways, Bill, which then went on to passage with great support. So who knows?
Yeah.
Perhaps it'll become a big happy thought and be a thing.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Rob, for getting that coming out so nicely. Okay, board policies. Received some policy language from WAZDA for our review and so I think what, two are discretionary, ones mandatory. So let's start with the ethical conduct for school directors, number 1815. Now, this is the, this is the mandatory one, right? Does it have to be mandatory exactly in this language? Oh, modify is accurate for our district.
That one's not mandatory.
The ethical conduct one?
The one that's mandatory is the 1822, the training and professional development that adds the additional equity training to the...
Oh, I see, okay. Oh, I see what you're talking about. Okay. So we're on ethical conduct for school directors. Do we know how this overlays with what we already have? I know we have some...
We have GC7 Code of Conduct. And it doesn't have a direct mapping to the sort of clear list of things here, but I thought reading through them just before the meeting today that a lot of the, the same concepts are being expressed with different words.
That's what I was thinking, is that we already had this within our...
I remember when you all went through a pretty extensive process to go through. One of them, one of the things was not adding policies that weren't required.
Yeah.
Particularly if you had it referenced in some way in another spot.
Correct. And I think we do have this.
We have it in our governance culture as a...
Do we, I think we have all of these.
You're talking about under GC7, Rob?
I'm talking about GC7, like...
Yeah.
This proposed ethical conduct policy reads, "School directors place the public's interest before any private interest," and that's GC7-1. "Will serve the interests of the citizens of the entire school district." Greater than loyalty from your sub-district, loyalty to any other advocacy or interest groups, loyalty based on membership. So we're actually getting into more detail in our GC than, than this does.
So we have it covered and don't need additional?
Were they also proposing like 1825? In the, I don't know, front of meetings?
I don't think we need to add more.
We already have it covered.
We have code of conduct and we have GC8, board member conflict of interest.
And then GC9 for board violations.
Yes.
So...
Okay. So do we feel like we don't need to move this forward for any kind of public reading?
Do we need the professional development one?
I think that, that new law requiring the...
I'm on the ethical conduct one.
Okay.
The new one is...
I want to finish that one.
Okay, sorry.
So are we good with, with tabling that one because it's not, we already have it covered and we don't need another policy that says the same thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, training and professional development. This is another one that's discretionary, it says.
You're saying it's mandatory. It's marked discretionary in the document.
But I know we have to have that open government training and the cultural competency.
Well, this is, this one is discretionary. This is the addressing school director violations. And then the next one, 1822, is the professional development.
I know. And it also says discretionary.
Oh, it does. Sorry, I was looking at the first page, it didn't say anything.
That 1822 looks like our... See, we have, we have, we have an 1805 open government trainings. This looks like an extension of that. It adds the equity, diversity, and inclusion training that we, I'll get sign up for next week. I think it's the only change, right?
How could they have a training that's more comprehensive than what Clarissa's already put us through? That's what I want to know. We should be the training hub.
I do not disagree.
So can we go ahead and, this one looks like one we'll probably need to add because it's got the additional...
We add it, but that would let us remove 1805 from the thousand series because all the language in 1805 is also...
In this one.
In this one.
So this one can replace it then?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move this one forward as it replace and...
First reading.
First reading. Okay.
This one we have almost word for word in GC9.
Okay, well, if it's not adding anything, then let's just not move it forward. Okay, well, if it's not adding anything, then let's just not move it forward.
Yeah, agree.
I had GC9 up.
Okay, and then... Didn't we have one that was mandatory? That one's mandatory.
I think the 1822 is actually marked incorrectly as discretionary.
Discretionary, but it is mandatory.
Huh?
Yeah, I think they don't... They, they, they have that GC9 is 1825, so-
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't need to... Yeah, we don't need to worry about that. Okay, so now we're on OE. Equity.
This is, um, I actually, in our workshop last time after our discussion about the citizenship policy, had planned to put this document on the screen and forgot to do it. So that is sort of my fault for not bringing this up. What you're looking at is some notes about how Rachel and I, uh, reordered the policy to try and get these items to align item for item with the equity policy that we just passed for results, uh, which is not a perfect mapping. But it also, um, makes a modification there about the word "respect", uh, replacing it with "considerate" in the top. And then R3 equity item, 1, 2, 3, 3 and 4, 4, 5 and 6, just kind of down the row. Items 3 and 4 contain language lifted almost word for word from the Equity Policy Advisory Group's proposal that we saw last May. Other wording comes from, I think I've said this before, laboring at this point, but other wording comes from, uh, sources like Wazda's equity statement and from our resolution, uh, in the summer of 2020. And what I'm thinking is, and what I'm recommending, Vic, is that we've got this, and then we've also got the feedback coming from Clarissa's group about this and that we could, uh, schedule another workshop to examine their feedback and work this and still not be behind in the schedule and work calendar that we planned.
So let's put it on the next board workshop. Clarissa, does that give you time? If we put this on the next workshop, um, to have feedback from your, your folks?
We just need to have the link and-
What?
We just need to do our homework now, I think.
Okay, so we just need to see the feedback and take a look at it. Okay. So we'll put it on the next agenda. The next workshop agenda.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, just give us a quickie where, where you wanna be with the student representatives. I know we're not gonna have a big discussion about it, but just so-
Right.
So everybody knows what we're gonna do.
Just kind of on the timeline. So right now, my timeline is that the applications go out, um, and are due back for consideration on January 6th, which brings it, so they have over the holiday break. Um, so it'll... My intention is to have the applications submitted and out, um, about, probably around the 13th of December.
When do they start their-
They come back on the 3rd, I think.
And when they, they leave to go on break?
On the 20th. I think it's the 15th.
17th, maybe?
Yeah, that's that week. It's the end of that week.
So do we have, will we have time for people to get an announcement out so kids know about it?
Yes. So I will have it all, everything ready to go and work with who I need to. The biggest will be us getting all of the stuff, um, through all of our readings and approved for the actual structuring of it. But I wanna make sure to get the apps out, but with enough time so that they have a week before, a week and a half before the holiday starts, the holiday, and a week after the holiday.
Okay.
So it kind of gives them that little buffers because I know I forget things all the time, so.
And we'll have, um, that's gonna be a main topic at our conference. So we'll come back and be able to just like go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on that? And the hope is to have the apps reviewed on the 10th of January with the notification to the board that week and as well to the application, applicants. And then hopefully a present, or presenting them at the official board meeting on the 25th of January. That's not set in stone, but that is where we are moving forward, so.
Okay, so that's great. Thank you. That was easy.
Yep.
Okay, so I will go ahead and now, um, we will leave to go into executive session. And, um... Approximately an hour?
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.